We'd like to welcome everyone to the August 9th meeting of the New Bern Board of Alderman. Tonight, this time, if you would join me in a prayer. Heavenly Father, we just ask that you be with us tonight as we do your work here in New Bern, and do those things that will be pleasing to you and in the best interest of our city. In your name we pray, amen. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ma'am clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Bingle, here. Alderwoman Harris. Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Best. Alderman Odom.
Here.
Okay, at this time, we have a question, citizens. Yeah, yeah, thank you. Our first one would be Jane Gallagher. Jane, could you just give us your name and address for the record?
Sure. My name is Jane Gallagher. I live at 3725 Elizabeth Avenue, New Bern, North Carolina. I recognize some of you gentlemen for our meeting yesterday, and thank you for your assistance and for listening to me, to us. And when I say me or I, I am representing the neighborhoods that surround Elizabeth Avenue, which would be Derby Park, Colony, it would be Derby Park 1, 2, Elizabeth Downs, Saratoga, there's about five others. Point is, I am here to represent all of them. We have some very concerning issues. I want to see if we can work together. My topic specifically is we need a construction road from Elizabeth Avenue, the very end of Elizabeth Avenue where the construction is now started. They've leveled out all the trees. We need it right from there to Highway 43 direct. And the reason we need this is, one, safety of our residents. We have been putting up for weeks with these trucks barreling down our streets, and somebody's going to get hurt. One of the are children, they go out on the road in their bikes, someone's going to get hurt. And we're fighting for them, we are fighting for them. Also, there's H.J. McDonald School. May I have my posters, please? So you can be more aware. Okay, let me show you this. This is H.J. McDonald School. I just took this picture yesterday. Please note that the school, it says H.J. McDonald atop, and at the bottom, and underneath H.J. McDonald, right here, it says Elizabeth Avenue. So that's why I took the picture. This is the sign that is sitting there. The sign says speed limit 25. Well, I'm guaranteeing you, nobody's doing 25 down any of this road on Elizabeth Avenue, including from the school. Please also note that there is a sign that says no trucks. We cannot allow a construction crew going up and down these roads, and can cause harm to our roads. Emergency vehicles can't get through. I've heard Chief Gallagher, we went for a tour yesterday up and down Elizabeth, and I pointed out different areas where were definitely issues just with the traffic that we are dealing with. And it's crowded, congested area. There are little trucks from local roofing companies or gutter companies. I understand that they're a short period of time, they come and go. But what we're discussing right now is all this congestion that is going to be coming from the subdivisions from the end of... Let me have a show you this, before I run out of time. From the subdivisions that will be newly built. This here is a picture that I, given by Seth Loughlin, and it shows here, here's Elizabeth Avenue. Please note how congested that area is. This is Highway 43, wait. This is Highway 7. Back to the mic, please. Okay. So what they're doing is they're driving the truck.
Yes ma'am, they can't hear you.
You have to go to the mic. I'm sorry, thought I talked loud, but certainly not. So what they're doing is driving through this congested area, and also now through Derby Park Road. And they're going out to Racetrack and then coming back towards Elizabeth Road. So right here, our idea, which to me seems very plain and simple, build a new construction road right here.
Okay, well, thank you ma'am, and your four minutes is... Thank you so much.
Thank you for listening, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate your assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. Jane Ryan?
Hi, how are you?
Hey.
My name is Jane Ryan. I live at 322 Fairmount Way. I also own a house on 3727 Elizabeth Avenue that my brother resides in. Thanks for letting me voice my opinions. I specifically am greatly concerned about that increase in traffic and the dangers it's going to create for the people that do live there. I'm in favor of the new development, but how is this one small residential road going to handle all this? Elizabeth Avenue by the 3700 block, I measured it, it's 31 feet from outside curb to outside curb. Per the town's own classifications, it would fall under what's called the sub-collector road, which has a minimum width of 31 feet. But it also states that a sub-collector road serves 26 but no more than 100 houses. Last I saw, there were some 800 dwellings in Derby Court. So, and between 200 and 800 trips per day. And we're already well exceeding that before this construction even gets well underway. So basically, you have a 31-foot residential road that people do park on. A lot of them have no garages, they have very short driveways, so there's usually always some cars parked on the street. Lawn maintenance, roofers, we had some city officials out the other day, and there were three houses getting roofs put on that day on Elizabeth Avenue. So it's just that amount of traffic that's already there, and this compounded on this little residential road that people play on. I'll go over the specific concerns that I have about the increased traffic. Emergency vehicles. If you've got two roofers and then dump trucks coming, how is a fire truck or maybe an ambulance ever going to get down Elizabeth Avenue? If that's the only way in and out of that whole area. That's what befuddles me, is how this... Last year, there was a meeting, and I know that it was spoken to, that there was going to be like a future road to connect. Well, but when I found out, Warehouser kind of has them landlocked in between power lines, Route 70, and Warehouser property. So the only entrance that they have right now is Elizabeth Avenue. There should have been some type of easement agreement, I think, with Warehouser or something. There should have been some type of temporary construction road or something. That future mandated road supposedly that connects us to New Bern West, that could be one year, that could be 10 years, it could be 100 years, we don't know. It's all in Warehouser's hand at this point. I was surprised to find out that their road is a private road, not public. So town really doesn't even have a way to enforce that area back there. But there has to be some way, I don't know, land use lawyer, somebody must be able to figure out a way that possibly they could get some type of a temporary construction easement or something similar to what Jane was saying. I don't even care where it is, I don't know if I'm qualified to figure that out, but there must, where there's a will, there's got to be a way. Because I'm sure it's only a matter of time. You know, they're going to hold up this poor duck. Okay, it is a duck. What struck me when I first saw this picture was, this could have been a kid, and very well may one day be a child. So this really is what I have some concern. My brother's elderly, lives in my room, I fear for him going to get his mail already, pulling out of his driveway. I just feel like something's just waiting to happen. So the school she did mention, I feel for their truck drivers. They're going to have a heck of a time getting to that work site when school starts, because it can be a half hour to get from South Gullimburgie to Racetrack Road with the weight of the traffic of the trucks. They have limited visibility, they're sitting up high. Kid runs out from a car in front of him, they'll never see the little kid. I already mentioned the ducks and the geese, there's a lot of wildlife. The water collection have turned into a lot of wildlife ponds. And I went into the red, but... That's, I basically said everything that I was hoping that I would get a chance to say. But again, I mean, somebody, maybe they can get creative, they can consult again with some type of lens, like to find out if there's a way to get an easement. Warehouser has their core values on their website, and one of them is citizenship. The communities where we work are important, we help them thrive. So, I don't know. Again, I thank you so much for at least letting me get it on sort of off my chest. And hopefully, from tonight, something can get resolved or something can be figured out, other than just trying to hit out a traffic ticket, which won't work.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming in. Yeah. Ron? Would you come on up and give us your name and address for the record?
My name is Ron Sage, I live at 226 Saratoga, and I'm representing the whole Derby Park entity, as you will. You've heard previous ladies speak about, there are seven housing developments inside the Derby Park area to include Racetrack Road and to include Elizabeth coming off of, thereby H.J. McDonald. My concern is the weight of the vehicles. You saw the sign that says no trucks allowed. But yet, the city is allowing construction vehicles, some of them weighing over 30,000 pounds, to tear up our roads. Now, if you've been down Elizabeth in front of H.J. McDonald, the road is already crumbling, it's already deteriorating. You go further back into Elizabeth, back to where the subdivision is being created, the road is already starting to crumble. I live down Saratoga, we just finished the house builds down there. My road is still crumpled, just from the small trailers with pickup trucks coming down the road and delivering their goods and work. So I want to appease, or appeal to you guys to look at some other way, instead of going down Elizabeth, instead of coming up Racetrack Road, to be able to get into where they're going to build. If you see the picture that she showed, it's not just at the start of Elizabeth, it goes all the way back to Highway 70 and all the way over to Highway 43. That's a large portion that you're now asking, right now, to come off of Elizabeth, by all interpretation of the map and what it is we've been shown. Again, too many things going on for one entrance. And again, like I said, I'm here to talk about the road and the destruction of the road. So, thank you, I've said my piece, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. James Woods.
James Woods, 1903 Country Club Road. Couple meetings ago, you guys had Matt up here talking about CBG, and I was sick and I couldn't get in. My question or observation is, I don't understand why with all the technology that we have today, that if I'm at home, I cannot respond, especially to when you're doing a public forum, like what happened with the CBG paperwork the other day with Matt. You know what I'm talking about? Anytime you do a public hearing here at the board, why can't we respond at home? Why do I have to be in front of you guys to respond? If I can watch it at home, and I know you guys have done Zoom meetings at home, why can't me, as a citizen, respond to things at my house if I cannot make it here? We have elderly citizens that cannot get up the stairs, and that would benefit them also, that they can participate in this Alderman meeting, because we have the technology to do it, we're just not using it. So maybe we need to use it, so that it will benefit everybody. Second thing. I congratulate those of you who will be still sitting on the board, and those of you that are not, congratulations. I appreciate the job that you guys have done. I know governing is not easy, I know that. I don't have to sit there to know that. I appreciate the job that you guys do. Maybe nobody else do, but I do. And governing is a two-way street, you guys and us, as citizens. You don't know what our concerns is, but we don't bring them to you. And we understand that you can't do everything that we ask you to do. But I appreciate everything that you guys have done in the last years that you've been on this board. That is from the bottom of my heart, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, James.
Thank you, James. Okay, that's everything there.
Ask a question, yes. And I don't know if the chief would answer this, or city manager, or actually the attorney, but the sign with the truck with the line across through it, that doesn't apply to trucks that have business down that road, is that correct?
That's right.
So it's only for through traffic?
Exactly.
So if a contractor has to get to his building site, he has all the right in the world to drive down that road?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure that you understood that. Well, I'll let the attorney do it.
Yep. The only ordinance we have is, they're called no-through streets, so trucks cannot go through a street unless they have a reason to do that. We don't want trucks taking shortcuts through neighborhoods. But if they have business there, then you're entitled to get a delivery, and you're entitled to have a truck if there's a reason to go on the street. Simple as that. It doesn't mean no trucks allowed.
Right, and I understand that we have, you know, like I said, local contractors, they don't do that, that's not a problem. And we support big businesses, that's not a problem. We're just saying that we don't want them to come down that road because they're local.
Yes, ma'am. Understood.
So I would appreciate if you would look into that, see if there's a way around the situation.
John, I'd like to thank you for coming out tonight to address what's going on. And that's the purpose of the manager and the chief, to go out, to meet with you guys, to come back to sit, to talk with the city attorney, to find out what can we do to try to resolve the problem. Until we can find out how we can work this thing out, that's when we can meet with you guys again and discuss where we are and what we can do. As far as right now, no law has been broken. So we pretty much is in order. But they're going to look to find out, to see what can we do to help to make things better, okay? Well, someone will contact you. That's the purpose of the manager and the chief going out to look into the situation, to give you an opportunity to come before the board tonight to speak. While we can work this matter out, okay? Thank you for coming out, thank you very much. Okay, let's go to the consent agenda.
May I like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as is?
Second.
Motion, second is there discussion. See and none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same, motion carries. Let's go to item number eight, or number nine.
Good evening, Mayor. First, this next item is to conduct a public hearing and consider an ordinance to annex 434 Riverside Drive. Phyllis and Stephen Epperson submitted a petition to annex this property in township 2. The property is a vacant point 29 acre residential tract. After conducting a public hearing, the board is asked to consider the request to annex.
Any comments while we have a public hearing? This time, we have a public hearing concerning this item. And if anybody would like to come forward, ask questions, make comments, you're welcome to do that at this time.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion, second, to close the public hearing, is there discussion? See and none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same, motion carries.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt an ordinance to annex 434 Riverside Drive.
Second.
Motion and second, is there discussion? See and none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number 10.
Next item is to consider a resolution approving the CDBG Annual Action Plan. This time, I'd like to ask Mr. Shelley to come up and make a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Alderman. So tonight, we're going to make a brief presentation before your public hearing and decision regarding the CDBG Annual Action Plan. So after our discussion last month, we went back and revised the proposal significantly according to what seemed to be the desires of the Alderman at the time. So now, the proposed budget for the allocation is $20829 for housing rehabilitation, $15,000 for the bus shelter project, and $53,957 for general administration for total, which equals the allocation of $269,786. And so we have for each one of those three categories, we have some details here for you. This one being for the housing rehab. This is now for the bus shelter project. And this is for the administration. So if you have any questions.
The main thing, Shane, seemed like we were trying to get more bricks and mortar and less...
Was the bus shelter was alone 85,000, so we got that.
Yeah.
And then the administration fees, you can't reduce because you have to take a standard 20%, correct?
I'm sorry, we...
The administration fees?
Mm-hmm.
That's the standard 20% that has to be taken regardless, correct?
It's not mandatory, no, but that's the maximum.
Okay.
I think one of the other issues too, is I've read in here, is we've upped the amount of funds so that we can get now 15 houses, could potentially be rehabbed. So, and I've also read in there that they all must be owner-occupied, correct? So this will not help any of the renters. But you, these are going to be given to sub-receipients, so that we won't be seeking the recipients. So now, one of the suggestions was made, was that we could have organizations such as Habitat, potentially, we heard, I believe Mr. Brown say, Phoenix Group maybe, and some others, Redevelopment Commission could apply for these funds, but they would meet the criteria, they would have to meet certain criteria that HUD sets out, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and then they would apply for the funds. Is it up to a certain amount per structure? Or could somebody come in and say?
No.
I need $50,000 or $100,000, and it would only give you one house?
No, yes, so it would vary by project.
But is there a max? You're saying that 15 houses can be fixed, so have you set a max each house?
That's right. So, yes, you could do that. It's essentially an average.
Okay.
So, there could be 20 houses that end up getting something, or 25, depending on how, if they're small projects.
And who will vet the sub-receipients?
The staff does that.
And they have to meet certain criteria.
That's correct.
And do we have anyone in the pipeline now that needs their house repaired?
Yes, we already have four applicants. That would be basically the first served out of, from the sub-receipients. And then after that, the sub-receipients would be looking for other projects of their own.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, if there's no other questions, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving the CDBG Annual Action Plan.
Second.
Motion and second is there discussion. See and none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number 11.
Next item is to consider an ordinance to amend the entitlement city's community development block rent fund. At this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Oster to present this.
So based on the old incentive plan, if you do this with ordinance, and then the CDBG funds to accommodate the rent, it's $269,786.
Cam, is there a, do we have a line item within the budget that says nothing but CDBG? So if there's any, if we have leftover dollars, and I don't know if we do, from the past current year, it sits in that line item? Or is that cleared out with each new budget? And now this is a new line item?
It's a line item, so every year...
You have to recreate it?
...we have a separate project fund.
So it's a separate project fund, it's just not a line item in planning, in our development services budget?
It's a line item, we have to project it.
Okay, but we have to spend all those dollars down? So there's never, it's not a continuing budget item? So you have to create it, put this amount of money, and credit the monies against it, or either lose the money or send it back?
You don't lose your money. It rolls over.
It does, that's what I'm wondering, if the money rolls over, isn't there a line item already created for CDBG if we have funds left over?
So like year 2021, 2022?
That's a separated out.
It's separated, right, correct. So it's not lumped into one?
No, it's separated. If there's, if there's no discussion, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt an ordinance to amend the entitlement city's community block, or community development block rent, CDBG fund.
Second.
Motion and second, is there discussion? See and none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number 12.
Next item is to consider a resolution initiating the upset bid process for 612 Second Avenue. Rise Up New Bern LLC has submitted an offer of $2,022 for the purchase of the property, but that kind of lot is a point 050 acre parcel valued at $4,000, and the offer represents more than 50%, of the value. The property was acquired jointly by the city and county through tax foreclosure in December of 2016. At that time, the unpaid taxes, interest, penalties, and costs due to the county were $3,527, and the amount due to the city was $2,850.33. The city also had a lien assessment in the amount of $4,860. If the property is sold for the initial bid, the city is projected to receive $1,123.27, and the county projected to receive $898.73. The city will also receive reimbursement of advertising costs. This property is in the boundary of the Redevelopment Commission. On behalf of Rise Up New Bern, Mark Roberts made a presentation at the commission's May 11th meeting. After determining the plans for the property were consistent with the redevelopment plan, the commission unanimously approved the recommendation for the Board of Alderman to initiate the upset bid process.
If there's no discussion, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution initiating the upset bid process for 612 Second Avenue.
Second.
Motion and second, is there discussion? See and none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number 13.
Next item is to consider a resolution approving the general warranty deed between Habitat for Humanity of Craven County, Amelia Jenkins, and the City of New Bern for 2803 Acoch Avenue. On September 24, 2019, the city approved the conveyance of this property to Habitat for the purpose of developing affordable housing for low and moderate income families. Habitat has subsequently constructed a home on the property and intends to transfer the home to a buyer. By executing a deed to transfer ownership to the buyer, the city will release any rights retained under a transfer and reversion agreement between the city and Habitat.
If there's no discussion, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution approving a general warranty deed between Habitat for Humanity for Craven County and the City of New Bern for 2803 Acoch Avenue. Amelia Jenkins, and is it more?
No, no, second, nobody else is talking.
Oh, oh.
Well, a motion and a second, is there discussion? See and no discussion, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number 14.
Next item is to consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of agreement with the North Carolina Department of Public Safety, Division of Emergency Management, for HMGP Project 4393... for HMGP Project 4393-0029. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Shelley to come up to talk about this project.
Good evening again. So this is a $400,000 grant for, I'm sorry, $900,000 grant for essentially what people call FEMA buyouts. So there are eight properties that will be bought with consent of the owners, and then their properties will be demolished. The properties will then become property of the City of New Bern and will not be allowed to be redeveloped.
At all?
With a building. So it can be redeveloped as a park, or a cop lot, things like that.
Or what?
A garden.
A garden.
Yeah, some of the lots in Duffy Field have been turned into.
Then they cannot be sold or transferred to someone else, correct?
Uh, I don't know about that.
Yes, you cannot.
But.
You can't, I figured, okay.
So the city has to maintain them in.
In perpetuity.
Perfect. If there's no discussion, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of agreement with the North Carolina Department of Public Safety, Division of Emergency Management for HMGP Project 4393-0029.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. See, and then let's have a roll call started with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries on number fifteen.
Next item is to consider a resolution adding to Burnaway to the North Carolina Department of Transportation's secondary road system. At this time, I'd like to ask George Childs to come up to present this.
Good evening, board. What you have before you is a resolution in support of a petition to NC DOT to add approximately .09 miles of Burnaway to the NC DOT's secondary roadway system. This is in order for the plans and the construction of the improvements to Highway 7, the Highway 70 that are ongoing. Worked with Alderman Astor and Mr. Bichard to work out the details of that with DOT, and we are fully supportive of turning this section over.
May I like to make a motion that we consider adopting a resolution adding to Burnaway to the North Carolina Department of Transportation's secondary road system?
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. See, and then let's have a roll call started with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries on number sixteen.
Mayor, earlier this afternoon, I did receive an email from Alderman Best. She is unable to attend this evening, but she did request that item sixteen be tabled to a, to a future meeting, so we're happy to do whatever the board requests.
I agree. If it's possible and the board decides, I think it should be tabled, you know, tabled to another meeting, preferably when the new board comes on.
Second.
You want, is that your second, Mr. Odom?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you made that motion?
Yes.
Any discussion? I'll favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same. Let's go to item number seventeen.
Next item is to consider a resolution to award the Southeast Water System Improvements Project. As demand increases, the corridors of Old Airport Road, Waterscape Way, and Wilcox Road will be unable to provide an adequate supply of water for domestic and firewater use. The water system in both corridors has been constructed linearly, which has created two dead ends and are not loop fed with any other part of the system. This creates unfavorable conditions from both the hydraulic and water quality perspective. Thus, the Southeast Water System Improvements Project was established to address the infrastructure needs. The project was put out for bid, and six responses were received. Harry and Ribbon Bark Incorporated submitted the lowest bid in the amount of $795,942.75. It is recommended that the project be awarded to the bidder and that the city manager be authorized to execute the contract and then change orders.
Well, this is another one of them, you know, of the whole I-42 and all that. The question I have is, from a contingency standpoint, if this thing runs over, is the contingency portion of it on DOT, or is it on City of New Bern, or is it a pro-rata?
I believe it's on City of New Bern.
Okay, and again, I'm probably gonna vote for it, but what choice do I have? But what is the cost benefit ratio? In other words, like, I assume for all this work, we're gonna upgrade our system at the same time, so it's not like we're just digging something up, throwing it away, a, an asset, you know, underground asset, and replacing it with something that's a similar utility that doesn't, I mean, I'm just trying to justify us having to spend out of the taxpayers' general fund two, two point something million dollars because the DOT is.
Well, that's coming up in a future, in a future item.
This doesn't have anything.
This is, this is a separate, this is a separate item.
Yeah, this doesn't have anything to do with.
But.
That's correct.
This is.
This is to improve the water flow in that.
I got you. I didn't know if they tied in or not. Now, I know this is the loop fee deal on the pressure and all that out there. This is gonna help, this is gonna help fire flows in the, as they develop, Blue Water Rise Southern Division.
So, I understand all this that's going on. Isn't this like a new development area? Is this area newly developed, and now they're having water issues?
No, I, I mean, maybe we better get Jordan to come up with some, but.
I'm just trying to determine.
I just wanna get a better understanding.
It's not, it's not that they're having water issues. This doesn't have anything to do with domestic water pressures. This is solely to give additional availability for fire flows.
Oh, so it's.
And it's looping our systems, which we should be doing as much as we can anyway, so, George.
Yeah, please.
Did I say that right?
Alderman Astor did a fabulous job. Alderman Harris, in this area, we've always had a master plan of kind of looping the southeast portion of the system. Ideally, everything would build out at the same pace, and we'd be able to kind of connect the dots. Unfortunately, or fortunately for that matter, the Blue Water Rise development in the extreme southeast portion of the system has developed much faster than some of the surrounding areas. So what we've had is a large demand on a dead end, and because of that, we don't have the, we're right at the bare minimum of fire flow we need in that area to meet the fire department's required fire flow needs. We're right there where we need to be. And the plan's been to kind of wait for the other developments to progress that way. It may be 10, or 15, or 20 years before we get that, that connection made. So in the interest of improving the fire flow capabilities for public safety, we decided to go ahead and put this loop in. Also provides some benefit to the entire area. It increases fire flow for everything on that part of the system, as well as it fixes some water quality problems we were having with the dead end lines. So we're having to do quite a bit of flushing on those dead end lines as it is. This will eliminate that flushing. It's more economical long term. We're not wasting that water, that water, what we're gonna retain in the system and kind of work that loop.
And so when you say fire flow, if there's an emergency, they are able to tap in and get a good flow of water to stop the house from burning. Perfect, thank you.
Let's see, we're on seventeen, right? It's, yeah, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution to award Southeast Water Systems Improvement Project.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. See, and then let's have a roll call started with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries on number eighteen.
Next item is to consider an ordinance to amend the Southeast Water System Improvements Project Fund. I'd like to ask Ms. Oshin to present this.
This Southeast Water System Improvement Project was established on March 22, 2022, initially funded with $488,400. As described in the previous item, the loan bid for the project was $795,942.75. Therefore, it's recommended that the project fund be increased to $875,000 to cover the estimated construction costs and provide a tougher chance of contingency for any upper speed issues that may arise. This amendment will transfer $386,600 from the water fund to the project fund. It is recommended that the board adopt the attached budget amendment that's presented in front of you.
Thank you, Kim. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the ordinance to amend the Southeast Water System Improvement Project Fund.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. See, and then let's have a roll call started with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Okay, next item, number nineteen.
Next item is to consider a resolution approving the utility construction agreement with the North Carolina Department of Transportation for Project U-5713-R-5777A and B. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Hughes to present this item.
Mayor, members of the board, what we have in front of us is the standard NC DOT utility construction agreement for the portions of the James City Highway 70 improvements that are currently under construction. To accommodate the highway improvements, there's roughly $10 million of water and wastewater lines that need to be relocated. As part of that, they've gone through an extensive design process, affirmative process over the last two or three years, to the point now they're moving forward the construction. They need the utility construction agreement in place, basically to firm up New Bern's commitment to provide the 25% reimbursement that's due. So per general statutes, based on the size of New Bern's population base, we are required to provide a 20%, a 25% contribution towards that total cost. A little good news and bad news in the delay. They've been working on this agreement for about a year, just in the process of dealing with the project as a whole. It's kind of got pushed aside a few times with DOT. The good news for us, we have negotiated with them, they did the original estimate about a year ago of what the total cost was gonna be. Came up with a lump sum cost for that. We were able to negotiate DOT to leave that cost estimate from '21 in there as the cost estimate we use for calculating our 25%. And I will tell you, if you're looking at other projects of similar work type, it's a very big cost savings to the city to use a cost estimate from a year ago versus a cost estimate from today. So very fortunate there, we're getting a very good, a very good price for the amount of work that was getting put in place. There again, we're only paying 25% of that. Most of the work is just a relocation. We're taking water lines and sewer lines and relocating them out of the highway construction area, out of the proposed right of way. There are several areas where we've, we've got a betterment, where we've taken an eight inch pipe, and we've looked at future plans, future projects, and made an eight inch pipe a 12 inch pipe, or a six inch pipe a 10 inch pipe. So during the two or three years this project went through, it is very, very intensive design, working very closely with the DOT engineers, the contractors, engineers, the design bill team, to ensure the finished product out there is what we want, not only to meet our needs today, but looking kind of at the future growth of there to make sure we'll accommodate that as well.
And obviously, Kim, these expenditures would go, I assume, to the enterprise funds, the general fund would not be.
Yes, sir.
Expensed, and then the water and sewer would probably be, where it would be charged, is that correct?
The next item up is a budget amendment to fund a NC DOT Water and Sewer Improvements Fund. We have several of these that will roll on for the next few years. This is, there's three pieces to the James City bypass work. This is, this covers the first two, the A and B portions of the project. The C portion is in design, and in the upcoming years, we'll, we'll be moving into doing the same process with that, as long, as well as the, the southern leg of the Highway 43 connector. All in the next three or four years, we'll, we'll be going through the same lengthy process of design, design review, cost estimate preparation, and we'll be bringing back to you our, our proportionate share of those relocation calls. So it's, it's probably in everybody's best interest and in time saving, go ahead and just establish one project fund as this will move across many years, and we will add to that project from, from the Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds as needed to cover those capital expenses.
So when would we be shelling out 2.2 million dollars?
At the conclusion of the highway construction, is how the agreement reads. We can pay at any point.
Three years?
Yeah, but by agreement, we do not have to, we do not have to, they will send us an invoice at the conclusion of the work. And we're probably looking, at this point, they started in the last couple of weeks really getting into the utility construction, and we've got a solid 18 months if everything goes well, maybe 24 months if they run into any issues, just to get the pipeline in the ground. So I wouldn't expect an invoice from DOT anytime in the next couple of years.
But do we, I mean, are we like putting a savings account? We've got the money, we'll stay there.
Yes, ma'am, I think that's very appropriate.
What happens, there's no grants or anything that we can get to work with this or no other monies?
No, ma'am.
And this isn't something you would borrow, correct?
No, ma'am, we, we've got adequate fund balance money in our, our fund balances for our Water and Sewer Funds, as well as our capital reserve fund for Water and Sewer to cover the infrastructure costs.
Jordan, you said that our share is 25% of the cost?
Yes, sir.
Just out of curiosity, why do we have to pay anything when DOT is requiring us to move so they can build their road?
It's a good question, and it's outlined in general statutes. They have a tiered system. The bigger the city, the more you pay. The breakpoint is 50,000 in population. As long as we stay at a 50,000 population, our percentage is 25%. It's, it's very weird that if you're a county water or sewer provider, or a sewer district, a water or sewer district, you pay zero cost. It's fully reimbursed by the DOT. But from, but if you're a municipality, you own a water and wastewater system, they have a very nice system, it's all outlined by general statute. Have no idea why that was what was adopted by our legislators some point back, but it's been in place for quite a while. I don't think we're gonna do anything to change it anytime soon.
Yeah, and this, this is covering both water and sewer, correct?
Correct. And one way to look at it, it's not such a bad thing. A lot of the infrastructure out there was put in in the early 80s with the original Leusch River Sewer System out there. So that, that infrastructure's getting 40 plus, getting close to 40 years in age. So for 25% of the cost, you're getting brand new infrastructure and getting the chance to provide some betterment, some upgrades where we feel need. So it, it's not a total loss. You know, if I had, if I had my choice, we would not do anything out there. It'd be great if we didn't have to do this and we could spend the money elsewhere. However, it's a necessary evil when you, when you are working in NC DOT right of way, and you have your infrastructure in the NC DOT right of way. That's one of the caveats to the encouragement agreement. If you ever, if they ever need you to move it for part of their highway construction, you've got to get it out of the way.
Jordan, you know, years ago, we had that pressure problem out there in Tavarna, and we literally cut the road and took the PVC out and put the duct tape in.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, all that expense and everything. Are you, I know you're not dealing with the same dynamic problems there, so are you just gonna simply be using a PVC type? Or would this be duct tape on that?
Combination of both, Mayor. We're using some duct tape, and we're using a PVC pipe that is a much higher standard than the stuff we took out of Tavarna from that original construction.
Right.
So it's an AWWA C900 pipe, which is the same thing we use in Water Main standards. Very good pipe, works very well. We don't have any problems in the areas. We implemented that as a standard about a decade ago, had no issues since then.
Well, I mean, you figured that in that price for the.
Yes, sir.
So, and you don't feel like that we're running the kind of problem we did at Tavarna?
No, sir.
Okay.
Could we loop both of them together, or no?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, if you want to, Barbara.
Okay, Mike, you have, just go ahead.
Oh, me?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I'd like to, does anybody have an issue with that on the board? Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving a utility construction agreement with the North Carolina Department of Transportation for Project U-5713-R-5777A and B, and also an ordinance to establish a North Carolina DOT Water and Sewer Improvement Project Fund.
Second.
Motion and second. Let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries on number 21.
Next item is to consider a resolution approving a license agreement with the New Bern Area Improvements Association for 800 Seager Street. Back in July of 2019, the board approved a license agreement with that entity to lease the Omega Center for a period of three years. Purpose of that was to use that facility for a variety of parks and recreation programs, and a little of the Stanley White Recreation Center, that, that was substantially damaged. With construction, getting ready to kick up it, on the new Stanley White Recreation Center, we're anticipating that we're gonna need an additional about 18 months to be able to house parks and recreation programs. So this current lease does expire at the end of this month. Parks and Recreation has requested that this lease be extended in the amount of $42,500.
Could, Foster, could you or Scott clarify? I see the dollar amount, but then on Exhibit A, there's actually some bulleted items. Is that just to give some guidance for what the money's gonna be used for, or it's not tying us in to those projects because we don't know the cost of them, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. The cost is the cost, that's it.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Nobody has any other questions? Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve a license agreement with the New Bern Area Improvements Association for eight hundred Cedar Street.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. See and none of us have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. Appointments, Alderman Bingle? Appointments tonight?
No, number twenty-two.
And twenty-four.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, let's do, let's do the other one there.
Few more.
Number twenty-two.
We've got ten minutes.
I'm sorry.
Next item is consider a budget ordinance amendment for FY twenty-two, twenty-three. At this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Ostrom to present this.
The general fund is amended to appropriate the fund balance, from fund balance, forty-two thousand five hundred for the license of the Omega Center for the, for eighteen months for public recreational services and other public activities. It's also amended to appropriate from fund balance, one hundred ninety-seven thousand seven hundred dollars due to the increased insurance costs. From fiscal year twenty-two to fiscal year twenty-three, insurance costs increased by two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. Additionally, the water fund is amended to appropriate from fund balance a transfer of three hundred eighty-six thousand six hundred dollars to the Southeast Water System Improvement Projects Fund, and nine hundred thousand dollars from the Water Capital Reserve Fund, seven hundred sixty-one thousand three hundred sixty-five dollars from the Sewer Capital Reserve Fund, and five hundred sixty-nine thousand three hundred fifty dollars for the sewer fund.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the budget ordinance amendment for fiscal twenty-two dash twenty-three.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. See and none of us have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
All right, thanks.
Next item is consider it an ordinance for the demolition of eleven sixteen Grace Street. On November twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, the owners of this property were served a complaint alleging the structure was unfit for human habitation. The owners were ordered to demolish or repair the dwelling by December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. To date, no permits have been applied for, and the structure remains noncompliant. Pictures of the property and a complete list of chronological events is attached to this agenda item for your consideration. Public Works estimates the cost of the demolition will be at eight thousand dollars.
Mayor, board, if there's no discussion, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the ordinance for the demolition of eleven sixteen Grace Street.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. See and none of us have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Okay, now appointments. Alderman Bingle?
Yes, mayor, I'd like to go ahead and appoint Dr. Steve Selma, Dr. Bobby Kotorba, and Donna Baker to the dangerous dog board.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. See and none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Any other appointments?
No, sir.
Alderwoman Harris?
None.
Alderman?
None tonight, sir.
Yes. Alderman Kinsey?
None, sir.
Alderman Odom?
Yes, sir. Mayor, I'd like to appoint Jim Morrison to the HPC.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. See and none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Any other appointments tonight? Attorney's report.
Nothing for tonight, mayor.
City manager's report.
Yes, sir. I'd like to get an update on a few things. First of all, the Tisdale House, got an email this morning from, from the Preservation Foundation. They are working with one group that is interested in the house and locating that. So, that, that group is working now to try to get a, an accurate cost to relocate the property, and they're actually looking to get some information on raising or dropping power lines. So, staff is working to get an estimate of cost on that, and hopefully we'll hear back from them very soon on how Preservation Foundation will proceed.
Question. Can I ask a question now? I know that Preservation, because they have contacted me, has, are also still interested in the lot on REM. Previously, we as a board talked about that, but we did not want to encumber the cost of moving the house, packaging it, putting together. They are now interested in buying at fair market value, the REM, the REM lot. And we have gotten an appraisal for that, but we would need to give direction to the city manager as if we would entertain Preservation buying that lot for the purpose of moving the house. But again, that, all their costs, you know, we would, we would get the monies from the sale of the lot, but they would take all the other responsibility on it. So, again, Mr. Hughes would need some direction. I want to open this.
Do we have any future thoughts for the REM property?
I don't know.
What's the market value that came out?
The market value for the approximately hundred by hundred foot eight parcels, forty-five thousand dollars.
So, we would sell it for forty-five thousand dollars. What would that money be invested into? Is it going to anything or just straight?
General, I mean, general fund, just like any other property.
Was that property in the redevelopment?
Yeah. There on REM, you know, again.
Okay, that's right.
So, I guess we'd need to give your direction. Is everybody in favor of that?
I just want, Scott, would that, would that be a, would that have to be upset bid, or would it, because you have appraisal?
If it, if it, if it's, it's to the Preservation Foundation for the sole purpose of relocating an historic dwelling, then that would be a simple contract with them, with that requirement.
Wouldn't have to upset bid, right?
No, sir.
Would you like a motion? Would that make it better for you, if we made a motion to do, that we would be willing to do that?
Just, I think just directions to put it on the agenda, because there are many steps before that.
Correct, but I'm just saying that he could advise Preservation, I guess, if that's what I'm asking, that that would be another alternative for them. Because in the email today, while they are looking at another lot, the lot at REM would be less costly to move the house than where they're looking at. But I want to make sure it's an option for them.
What, two options for the city as to the REM lot. Option A, upset bid, highest bidder gets it. It gets built on it or doesn't. Just very simple. If, if we want the Tisdale House to go there, plan B is to enter into a contract with the Preservation Foundation for that property at fair market value with the requirement that they relocate the house there.
And that's what I would like to see.
I'm in support of that.
Yeah, I would like to see, because this house, you know, they've been dealing with it, it's a beautiful home, and if it can be saved, it would look great in that neighborhood. So, if, if the pleasure of the board, are you all with me or giving me?
I mean, we need the house moved.
I need some voice.
Forty-five thousand dollars that, you know.
Is everybody good?
As, as long as they meet the requirements of the dates that we need it moved.
Yep.
And I would also recommend that the proceeds be applied toward the Stanley White Recreation Center debt.
Second.
That's, no, I, that, I think that's, that would be fair. Thank you. I support that.
Okay. You got enough direction there?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, well, do we have a message?
Do you want to give you an update on the elevator project? Had a meeting with the contractors today. We're approximately twenty percent complete on this. The contractors have been doing a great job with the blockwork. The anticipated opening date is going to be mid-May as of right now. Also, want to let you know that our Putt loose on the News summer concert series returns this Friday with On the Border, the Eagles Tribute Band. That was one of the best attended concerts held last year. We're looking forward to a great crowd with that. And the final thing I have for you is, we are in the middle of updating our comprehensive Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which was last updated in twenty thirteen. And there is going to be a drop-in session at the West Urban Recreation Center this Friday from two to four P M. And our consultants will also be at Union Point Park from six thirty to nine during the Putt loose on the News concert. So, if anyone would like to voice their opinions on the future of Parks and Recreation and facilities in the city, please stop by and talk to our consultants.
Foster, is that going to go on the website so I can repost it and share it on Facebook?
It should be on there now. It should be on Parks and Recreation Facebook.
Facebook, okay. I'll double check.
Foster, I have two more questions for you, if you don't mind. Going back to the elevator, is it possible that the renderings of what the elevator is going to look like could be put out on social media? There's been some buzz on social media that they can't believe the city would put an ugly gray structure next to our beautiful thing, and people are going, I can't believe it, it's so ugly, and, you know, and-
Absolutely.
I just think if they could see the picture of what the finished product is going to look like, it would be helpful. So, if we could get that out there, it's amazing.
We can do that. We, we currently have a rendering on the fence out there, and just think about this structure as a skeleton. So, the skin is getting ready to be put on it.
Understood, but it would be good to mark it that and put it out there. The second thing is, you know, we've had such great success with signs on our lots, and we've been selling things, that I think it's time we put a sign on the tablets lot, a nice big sign, because that's an important lot in downtown New Bern. I think we should sell it. We're selling all these other lots with great things coming on there, but we don't have a sign on it that says, this property for sale. So, the board may want to talk about that and look at that. I didn't know what your criteria was. You know, we put a lot of signs out on property that we owned, and it has generated a lot of sales for us. So, I don't know how people feel about that, but I've had several people. I, you love a sign, so-
Yeah, I feel about signs.
Put the sign out.
Put, you know, I say put the sign out, and let, we got a lot of visitors coming into our community. Maybe somebody might have a great idea and want to, want to do something with that lot and make it beneficial to our downtown, so.
Sounds good to me.
Give us direction, and we'll do as the board is requested.
Does the board, the board like to give direction to put a sign? Anybody against it? No? Okay, you got direction.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay. New business, Mr. Iver?
Just one thing, mayor. The clerk sent an email out several months ago about the transition period. We were originally given some dates, this block of, it's going to be the end of August.
The week of August twenty-second.
And then, then it got moved up, and you sent us an email and said it's been moved up. So, the board, this board needs to decide when we want the transition to take place. I believe that August twenty-third was a valid date for us. We had an existing meeting that night. Alderwoman Harris couldn't make it. When I found out she couldn't make it, I had travel arrangements. I'm not going to be available that day or that week either. So, the board needs to decide. My preference would be for us to move the meeting on the twenty-third, or whatever date we want to move it to. But the earliest we could do it would be Friday of this week, I believe, is the twelfth.
Yes, that's-
It's going to be certified on the order.
They stole the fact that we get the certification on Thursday.
So, one thing to keep in mind, I met with the new Alderman-elect, and it's middle of summertime, there's vacation schedules, there's a lot of things happening. So, we're essentially trying to get ten people scheduled to work out. So, we, we need to hash this out tonight, because I get asked every day when this is going to happen, so.
So, I won't be available on the twelfth, but will everybody be available on the seventeenth? That's a Wednesday. If not, I know that we originally talked about, um-
Bob Brinson's not available on the seventeenth, right?
What about the sixteenth?
Sixteenth, I have a final agenda that I can't get out of.
What about the fifteenth? Can we do it on Monday, the fifteenth?
Monday, the fifteenth, I'm fine with that. I could do Monday. Ms. Hazel, are you available Monday evening?
When would you say?
Monday evening, the fifteenth, at six P M. Are we keeping, it's six P M., right? Six P M. Okay, so who else do we need?
Bob, I think you, you're okay then. And I think Rick responded that he was okay on the email, I believe.
So, Monday, the fifteenth, at six P M?
So, I'd like to make a motion that we move our regularly scheduled meeting from August the twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two, to Monday, August the fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, at City Hall at six P M.
Second.
Motion and second, and let's have, just have a roll call. This, Alderman Bingle, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Hey, what other, other new business?
That's all, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Kinsey?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you, everybody, for working this out, because I wanted to be able to be here. So, thank you, Jeff. I appreciate you. Thank you, everybody else.
You got anything?
No, sir, I do not.
Oh, good answer. Yes, actually, I do. Is this the time that we should start, that we could talk about some ARP funds?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I would like to use two thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars of my ARP funds to purchase a POS system for the New Bern Fireman's Museum. The one they have is about ten years old, and it's all the pieces, and I asked them to get me a price for some new ones, so it's twenty-eight hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Do we need to second it? Okay, I second.
Question, can we, can we do that, Scott, based on our conversation today?
I think it's been checked.
Because they are their own independent nonprofit, and they are not, the city doesn't own that, would not own that asset.
Yeah, but with the-
I understand.
The city, the city can own that asset if they want to.
I, I understand. I'm not saying anything. I had asked about, you know, using some of my funds to go towards maybe deferring some of the costs at the Omega Center, and they said we're not, we're probably not be able to do that.
Well, that is confusing.
Kim, didn't you research it?
The money before, we were able to create a fund where nonprofits were able to get a grant from the same ARP funded money that came in the first time. So, if it's a nonprofit, you're able to be able to utilize the money towards nonprofits.
Yes, they can, we can do that, but we don't have the policies established for that just yet. But I do believe that we, I'll have to, I'll have to, I think this is allowable. I just need to figure out how that would flow.
So, can we vote on it, or approve it if it's allowable?
Yes.
So, we don't hold things up?
Yeah.
And then, on top of that, Chief, would you come up, please? That sun beating back here. I understand you've lost another canine unit, a dog?
We, we are down, we were down two dogs. We obtained one, and we're still absent or vacant one dog.
And what would it cost to replace that dog?
Roughly twenty thousand dollars.
Okay. Alderman Odom and I have discussed this, and I'm not going to speak for you, but I'm assuming you're still okay.
Yes.
We would like to take, utilize ten thousand dollars out of each of our ARP money funds.
Alderman Astor, hold on. I have my canine lieutenant with me.
Oh, good.
He's giving me a signal, so I think maybe it's worth that.
Price increase. No, no price increases. You're going to have to come up with some money. The dog, I thought, was only fifteen thousand.
They got a pair of mics.
Yeah, you need to come up.
Come to the mic so they can hear you, so the, so the people on Facebook and on the TV can hear you.
So, it gets kind of complicated with where we're going to get a dog to source it the fastest. We can get a dog from different vendors quicker, and that's kind of what we're trying to do, and get the dog back to Colorado the quickest. So, if we have to go further away to get it, we're going to have to spend more money because of the training of it. So, it just-
Well, you have a healthy travel budget, Mr. Hartman.
We, we, we've heard with what we've got lost.
I understand. Well, if you need more, come back to see us. That was a Bill Hartman saying. So, I would like to make a motion that we, we encumbered twenty thousand dollars, and ten of it from my account, and ten of it from Jeff's account. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, the ward, ward allocations. Let's not say accounts, because let's be, let's be clear and transparent. We don't have any accounts.
I was okay with all that until he came up and tried to change price on me, then.
Yeah, second.
Okay, we have a motion.
That includes both of the things you're requesting, right? Or do we need to do it separately?
That, well, I'm looking at the POS and, and ten thousand dollars out of my ward allocation.
Okay, so does the POS system is based on if it can be used, right?
Correct.
Okay, so that's the motion. Second, he's second, okay. I just wanted to clarify.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries, next item. We get naming rights, right, Chief?
Alderman Astor, were you combining that in one motion? Because we don't have a second on the first one.
Yes.
For Fireman's Museum.
Well, yeah, because he combined it with the second one.
He combined it.
Yeah.
If, whatever works, whatever we need to do, make it work. I'm fine with them together. Okay, and that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes. All right, so I'm here with the community announcements. This Saturday, the first annual back-to-school event that is being hosted by Cooper Designs is going to be at the Omega Center from one P M. to five P M. It's free to register, and it's for teachers. Show your school I D. They're giving you supplies. We, you guys know how hard-